Okay, the regular meeting of the Bellevue zoning board of adjustments for the Township of Bellevue for October 1st, 2015 will now come to order. Clerk order roll.
Caruso, Giannam, Mafucci, Montalbano, Smith, Sheldon, Palano, Del Gershia.
Here. Okay, everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, she didn't make a comment, so I'm gonna ask first, I have to ask this. Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, notice of this meeting has been given to the press and the public according to the Department of Public Affairs Act.
Has all the members got a copy of the minutes? Do you agree with the minutes?
I make a motion to be accepted.
Motion made by Mr. Caruso to accept. Do you have a second? Second, and then we're Mr. Palano, clerk order roll.
Caruso, Giannam, Mafucci, Montalbano, Smith, Sheldon, Palano, Del Gershia.
Yes. Mr. Gassion, I understand that you are adjourned one of the cases on the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I expected that Glanville case would take most of the night, therefore I made the request for you to adjourn.
Okay, so you're giving time waivers and everything.
Absolutely.
So, anyone in the audience that's interested in number four on the agenda, ZB 2015-17, 78 Rutgers Street, Limited Liability Corporation or Company, whichever it is, 236, 238 Washington Avenue, that's an applicant who's proposing to construct an archery range of four booths in the basement of the building. That will be adjourned to Thursday, the 5th of November. There will be no further notices either in the newspaper or in the mail. Okay, I have a communication.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything else on the agenda?
I have a request with regard to the agenda that is completely separate apart from any of the cases on here.
You have something to put on the agenda?
I have a request with regard to it. We have, obviously, the agenda has backed up because a particular case, the Glanville case, has been going for a while. Have a client, Bellevue Industrial, that's the old Wallace and Tierney property. Not on the agenda, not on the agenda. The documentation's been submitted very recently. Mr. Lorenzo obviously hasn't had a chance to put it on the agenda, the agenda's backed up. That client has a particular problem with financing involving many pieces of property, and they need to get a decision rendered on that as early as possible, and I need to go on the record and request a special hearing date with regard to that.
Mr. Gassion, it would be very nice to you, and I don't change my personality, if an application isn't on a regular agenda, you cannot ask for a special meeting.
You answered my question.
Okay. Once it's on the regular agenda, you can ask.
I have an obligation to a client, I have a liability obligation.
Yes, you did a good job. Now, back to the communication. I have a communication from the Law Department, from the Township of Bellevue, and it is dated September 30th, 2015, to me. I won't say I'm honorable, even though it says that. It's relation to Brighton Estates, 138 Brighton Avenue, Bellevue, New Jersey, document number ZB 2014-08. Dear Chairman Del Gershia, in response to your concerns and questions and those of the general public regarding the captioned application scheduled to be heard, excuse me, on October 1st, 2015, please be advised that a request has been made by council for the applicant that it be permitted to lease, buy, or otherwise utilize property owned by the Township of Bellevue in connection with the above application. The township is not willing to do so either at this time or any future time. The Township of Bellevue objects to the hearing of any application which includes utilization for any purpose township property without securing in advance and in writing a conveyance of its rights. Very truly yours, Thomas and Murphy Esquire, Township Attorney. And that has been sent to the town, to the Board Attorney, Mr. Rego, to you, Mr. Gassion, you should have a copy.
I do.
The mayor, council members, and Kevin M. Esposito, the interim township manager, who's also the town assessor. Now, based on that letter, and because of continued ambiguity over the boundaries of the property, I am recommending to the board that we hire an independent surveyor to survey the property once and for all so we know what the boundaries are. So it doesn't cause any problems, and we have, we don't have no problems with the council, we have no problems with the applicant, or with the general public. Mr. Gassion, your position on the situation?
Obviously, we had a surveyor do a survey. That survey was reviewed and basically agreed to by Mr. Harris. We proceeded with the understanding that that was acceptable. This letter is a bit unique, and it just came today. I don't really recall receiving a letter from the municipal attorney previously in my career with regard to a pending land use application. So, I thought we had provided sufficient information and brought the surveyor here to testify with regard to that information. Obviously, I understand what the board's rights are, as you made clear to me with regard to my request for a special hearing five minutes ago. But, we thought we had presented adequate information. The board's decision is the board's decision. But, we were on the impression the case was going to be complete tonight. That was made clearly clear. And, again, my surveyor had testified very reasonably articulately as to how the survey was done, and Mr. Harris certainly had no objection to that procedure and seemed to indicate he agreed with what was done. Therefore, I don't think it's a necessary step, and again, repeating myself, the board has the right to do what the board wants to do. I certainly would not insist that the hearing go forward under that scenario.
Okay. I make a motion to be hired a surveyor. All right, now, here's the situation, while we're having discussion. You could have a survey, we could hire a surveyor, okay? But the thing is, since the town got involved, I think we should hire, we all agree, an independent surveyor. So it doesn't involve the town, it doesn't involve the applicant. However, unless you want me to get surveyors and bring you a resume next month for us to pick who we want, which I know how the board is, the only way I could do it fast enough would be to hire somebody, and I'll check and see if they ever did any work for him, for that or the town, before I would use them, because I don't want no conflict of interest. That would be with anybody, even if I got a couple of resumes.
If I wanted to get a surveyor with resumes, and call the resumes, and then I'd hire him.
You know, I think we need to be reasonable here.
Because of time.
Because of time, on both sides, okay? A. B, if we don't think that you're competent to pick a survey, you shouldn't be chairman.
Oh, thank you. Why, just say I'm not competent.
No, I'm saying, you know, so I'm just saying, you know...
There's another reason I said this, that's why.
My opinion is, my opinion is...
Yes.
That if you can, you know, pick a survey that, using the criteria you just outlined, I, this is me only, I'm comfortable with the chair, I'm picking out someone that is independent, maybe consulting with Mr. Rego, that would make me comfortable.
No problem.
But, you know, to say that we gotta do interviews and all, I think that's a little , I don't agree with that.
I don't even say interviews, I'm just saying resumes. But what I'm saying is, if the board is satisfied with allowing me to consult consultation with the great people, I have no problem doing that. I just didn't want to overstep my authority.
No, that's my opinion.
Okay. Question, any other members? Yes, Mr. Montalbano.
How much time do we need for the survey? Will he be ready by the next meeting?
I would have to get him first, and then he would give me the date, then he would have it. I mean, it is 30 days.
I will not, I will not agree to an extension beyond 30. I'm not gonna waive the time constraints for more than 30 days. A survey can certainly be done in that period.
Okay.
I have a question about...
Go ahead.
This was looked over by Mr. Harris, and we're not accepting what he...
No.
We're not.
Because apparently, he works for the town, and the town ain't happy.
But that doesn't make sense, Mr. Chairman.
Well, when I talked to Mr. Harris one day, and I said something to him, he says, "Well, technically, I may have a conflict because I'm the town, I'm the town engineer." And now they're still complaining, the town. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now, Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris, I don't believe is a surveyor. He may have a planner's license, but I don't think he's a surveyor, and to be independent, we don't even want to use his firm, because he actually works for a firm. He doesn't, he does not work for himself.
I think that Mr. Harris has been for himself.
If there's a conflict with Mr. Harris, it would be me who has the right to object, not the town. The town has hired Mr. Harris, and I have no objection to what Mr. Harris said.
Well, I have a problem with it, okay? And I'm the chairman. All right? I have a big problem with it.
Big problem with what?
With using him at all after, after the town sent this this letter. I want it totally independent, I don't want anybody in the audience to think anything went on, nothing. I want an independent person, period.
But respectfully, though, my issue is not with Mr. Harris.
I don't have an issue with him. I just want an independent person.
Listen, hear me out. What I'm saying is, if, if we want to do an independent, that's my, I don't want anybody to believe that my concern is Mr. Harris.
Oh, I don't believe that.
It's not. So we're clear.
I don't believe that.
If anybody understands.
You did say that.
But I will make sure that. If you want to do an independent survey for a comfort level, as a board, fine, but I want to be real clear that we're not doing it because I don't have confidence in Mr. Harris.
But Mr. Harris is not a licensed surveyor.
Listen to me, listen.
Why don't we ask that question to Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, are you a licensed surveyor?
Yes.
You are. I still don't want to lose it anyway, so I don't want you to do it.
Just do it, you know, just don't, me, I don't like that anyone know that my issue is with Mr. Harris. It is not.
Jerry, yeah, Frankie raised the question.
Yeah, we're paying for it.
Well, it happens to come out of the escrow. Just like if we asked for a traffic expert, that comes out of the escrow counter?
This is not gonna be a full-blown survey of the whole property, this is mainly from the line of...
The boundaries.
The rear, the rear of the property, where there's an issue, or a potential issue.
Well, here's the thing, in order to get to the rear of the property, they have to measure it from the front of the property. I mean, that's the way, because that's where there was a 20-foot discrepancy to begin with, a year ago.
I'm not an expert surveyor.
Does this mean there'll be markers to the...
No, no, there were never markers. There's nothing really stored, there were never markers, from what I understand.
But, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have additional discussion.
Go ahead.
I don't agree with what you said, it's a lot. You're telling me that Mr. Harris is not independent. It's the town that is concerned about this, is what you're telling me. Mr. Harris is the town engineer, the town surveyor. There is no conflict, he's representing them. The only conflict would be if I said it was a conflict. I do not. I have no objection to what Mr. Harris did and what he has said. In addition, the letter from the municipal attorney does not say any, you're acting like the town's asking this. All the letter from municipal attorney said was, they don't want their property being used under this application. We're not using it. We've removed our whatever from that parcel. We've changed the plan to be consistent with the survey says, what the surveyor did. So I don't see the necessity for a survey based on Mr. Murphy's letter, based on the fact that Mr. Harris is a surveyor, he's the town's employee, and therefore he has said up to this point that he was satisfied with the procedure that was followed.
Well, I have a problem with it. I want an independent person, totally.
I don't have a problem. I think, I think...
How can we go against our own people? Totally absurd.
Artist's rendition.
I can't see that, it's a waste of town money.
I have a point, I have a point of work, if you're...
It's very relevant, not the town's question. So, it's a waste of time. Brad, what's your question?
Your engineer or surveyor, whoever, said there was 10 feet when the fence they're moving to the building. I don't agree with that. I think it's within 10 feet.
Well, I mean, that's your opinion, and you couldn't agree with Mr. Del Gershia who said there should be a survey, that you disagree with it. But again, that survey was done by a surveyor, I certainly wouldn't disagree with it. And repeating myself for the fifth time, Mr. Harris at that time did not disagree with it.
I think if the board's gonna move forward tonight, we should make it very simple. If the majority of this board wants a, wants to bring a surveyor on board, a different surveyor for whatever reason, it should be done. A surveyor can be hired quickly. I would like to see something done and distributed prior to the next meeting. You can't wait.
Yes, I would agree.
This can't be confirmed, you know?
No, no, it's gotta be done, and there's no reason why a surveyor can't do that.
Inconvenient, inconvenient. The next meeting is, I don't like to fall on the paper, and the next meeting is, you want time.
It's gotta be done, circulated, Tom needs to look at it, Mr. Gassion needs to look at it, and...
Look, I think important here is that we cannot compromise, you know, and Jerry, please don't interrupt.
I won't interrupt.
But, I don't want to get into, you know, that's your personal opinion, I want to make sure it's clear for the rest of, and for Mr. Harris purposes as well, and the audience. This is not about Mr. Harris. It's about a comfort level of being an independent surveyor. That's it. Please do not embellish any of that.
I agree.
Jerry, I have to knock the fan.
I'm not gonna knock him, I'm just saying I want it to be totally separate, so I don't... Well, I didn't mean it that way. I just want it to separate, totally independent, so nobody can question anything.
That's fine, but just, you know, I just want to clear that up.
And I want it based on deeds only, only deeds, nothing else, because that's what you own, what's in the deeds, period.
Well, again, I'm not gonna give that, I'm not, I'm not an expert in that.
Neither are you, Mr. Chairman.
No, deeds are deeds.
Some clarify deeds to be done, look at, look at, and it's worth considering.
I don't think we should exclude the outside, our... Excuse me.
Can you ask the public to be quiet?
Yes, everyone please keep quiet, this is between the board, the attorney, and our attorney, that's it.
All I'm asking is that we do not exclude Mr. Harris from the process, I'm still reviewing it after it's complete.
Okay, you can review it by the other guy, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Harris.
It needs to move along, and there are enough surveyors out there.
My concern is, you called us to a vote, as to whether or not a survey should be done by quote-unquote "an independent surveyor." The fact that hypothetically, the decisions made not to have a survey, and accept the survey that my surveyor did, and Mr. Harris at that time approved, then the people who vote know, my concern is that they would have an improper attitude towards the rest of the application. I have that concern. So if we're gonna have a vote, I would hope that the board would hear this without any acrimonial result of the vote having been hypothetically not to have a survey.
I think, well, I understand what you're saying, I see, but I think the whole thing in this is, is that when, if we vote for this application, we have to feel comfortable that there's no problems. That's what we have to do. And basically, I'm sure there's members that are not comfortable right now, even with the surveys we provide, every time there's a survey, everything changes, calculated in the back. It'll have two figures, one is survey, one is deed. I mean, it's, it's like, how many times do you need two different figures?
This is strictly for a comfort level with regards...
This is a comfort level.
With regards to the back area.
And I will go along with whatever, whatever the person has.
I have to.
I have to, exactly. But I want to get this done once and for all, so there's no more arguments. Because every time you turn around, there's another argument over this thing.
The argument has never come from my applicant.
No, it's never from your applicant, because your applicant's the one who's putting up the application. It comes from everybody else, including the public. That's how I want it. I'm trying to resolve this so everybody's satisfied once and for all. And it can't come back and haunt us with the town fathers.
Unless there's more discussion, I can...
The town fathers don't have input on a zoning board application.
Yes, but they have input on somebody using property that they feel is theirs, and they did not get permission to use their property.
Whether it's this applicant or not.
So once it's satisfied that it's not their property, that should end the whole headache.
I can tell you, in my history, I've certainly handled many applications where there was an encroachment on the setback, and I'll bet Mr. Rego has done the same thing, and there was never an issue from the municipality on those applications.
Well, they made an issue now.
Again, I'm gonna say it again, I agree with you, actually. I'm not making this, you use the word here, please not change it, Jerry. We said it as a, for a comfort level of the survey. That's it. I don't, please don't speak for me when you say, you know, the town fathers, that's not in my...
I don't speak for you.
I know, but you're making that statement, that's not in my decision-making process. Comfort level that I have, a good accurate survey, or we have three surveys that kind of bail each other out, that would make me more comfortable. You know, I respect the town fathers, but that's not the, that's not how my decision-making process works, it makes, it calls on what's best for the application. That's it. Can we move forward?
We got a motion, I believe the motion was made right up front to retain a surveyor to do a survey. To be done prior to the next meeting, distributed, and then we go from there.
Yes. Do you have a second? Seconded, a motion made by Mr. Caruso, seconded by Mr. Mafucci. Clerk order roll.
Caruso?
Yes.
Giannam?
No.
Mafucci?
Yes.
Montalbano?
Before I cast my vote, I'm sure the cases, do we have to get a special surveyor?
No, no.
If we have, if we, if we take the surveyor's report on a different case, do we have to get a special, request to have another surveyor?
You mean on another case?
Yes.
Well, this is the town, it's...
But we don't know.
This is, this is, this is an unusual case.
Every, every case is unusual, I'm just saying that, all right, I'll vote yes then.
Smith?
Yes.
Palano?
Yes.
Del Gershia?
Yes.
Now, the seven votes.
Seven votes, Jerry.
Yeah, five, six, seven, six one.
Six one is the vote.
Six one is the vote, seven votes.
Okay. So anyone in the audience, this application's being adjourned till Thursday, November 5th, 2015, there will be no further application, I mean notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. Now... I see the attorney, for, for...
Can I add to your point of order?
I didn't want to answer.
Right, but, at this case...
If it has anything to do with this case, no. The case is open for adjournment.
It's not a matter...
You can't discuss it, only we can discuss it.
But it's not fair, the objectors don't bid here, but you can...
Mr. Fred and Tony, you're out of order. Now, who's the next up first?
We, I believe we're listed as number two.
Can I come over here first?
Yeah, come through.
Off the record.
Give our motion.
Is that way you can get him out of the way? Because I don't want him to wait, we do. I mean, I don't mind staying, maybe some members stay, I'm, I'm... You want to keep it in rotation? All right, so we'll keep it in rotation. Okay, I'll go ahead with you now. Gentlemen, anyone who did not get this agenda, if the, if the case isn't on the agenda, it's not being heard tonight, it's that simple. Some people, I understand, got letters in the mail for a case that was not on our agenda, that they sent the notices out too early. So I would check, I would check next month to find out if it is on our agenda. Huh? You could either, you could either go, well, but wait, where's, where's Mr. Rego? Here. He's got it. Mr. Rego, the case is this, or you have to know to the law, or not unusual, despite the personnel requirement. What's the, come on up, come on up, come on up, come on up, come on up. He's got a set of notices to, to see if we're able to...
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, we'll tell you, we'll get the set of notices, we're not gonna hear the case. That's, it's not even on the agenda.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I've got a notice, but it's not on the agenda, so it's not...
Is this Berkeley Avenue?
Uh, no, it's a Hornbor Avenue.
Hornbor Avenue, it's not on the agenda, we're not here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Members of the Board, my name is Joe Sordillo, interning from Mattmore Joyce Moveney Carpenter. I'm here on the applicant, application for the property at 258-260 Washington Avenue, that's block eight, eight seven one, block ten. And this is a continuation of public hearing that we started back in August. At the August hearing, we presented testimony from our architect, identifying what the proposed building was to look like, and what we were looking to renovate and add to the building. We also had some testimony from one of the principals of the applicant, and tonight we are presenting Mike Lanza Thama, who is going to be testifying as our professional engineer and professional planner in connection with this application. This application is a site plan and with seeking, excuse me, seeking site plan approval with variance relief, so we do have pending testimonies in connection with that. There are a number of variances that we're requesting, including G variances, bulk variances, and parking variances, but I will allow Mr. Lanza Thama to, to address all of the engineering and planning testimony.
Mr. Sordillo, if I could, for a moment, you were here last on August 6th.
Yeah, August 6th was when we first...
All right, and just let me ask the board, that was two months ago, does anyone want Mr. Sordillo to give a two-minute, two-minute summary of what happened two months ago, or are you comfortable with this?
I'll put summary, two minutes, we can do it.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, no problem. We, at the initial meeting, we presented the, the application, we had our architect address the, the building. This was an existence, an existing building located at the property. We are looking to renovate it and add an additional floor to the rear of the building. We are looking for, this is for a mixed use, with retail facing Washington Street to retail spaces, and... and rental units, residential rental units fulfilling the remainder of the property. Uh, they are going to have one, a mixture of one and two-bedroom units. Uh, we discussed that the elevation is three stories in the front of the building, four stories in the rear of the building. The rear, the rear of the property does decrease in elevation, which Mr. Lanza Fama will testify to. Uh, we're looking to restore the existing brick and stone. Uh, we are gonna redo, provide all the amenities for, for the, the property. It was discussed that this was the original town hall, and there was a, it was brought up that there is a stone that has the original township insignia on it that we will restore to the best of our abilities and maintain. Um, the, we discussed in depth the additional floor that we're proposing in the rear of the building, uh, which is kind of proposing to have three two-bedroom units on it. Uh, and we also discussed briefly the parking, uh, and that we're adding additional parking to the site, including parking on underneath. We're looking to excavate and provide some additional parking underneath the structure. Um, and I think that's a two-minute summary.
And your architect testified at that meeting, and the, someone from the.
Yes, which, yeah, one of the principals from the, from the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, at this time, I, I would like to present Mr. Lanza Fama as a professional engineer and planner. Uh, if the board would like to hear his presentation.
He's been before as Pop War.
Did you state, regarding this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes, I do. My name is Michael Lanza Fama, that's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal at the firm of Casey &amp; Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Millburn, New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's science degree in civil and environmental engineering for New Jersey Institute of Technology. And I've been licensed as a professional engineer and land surveyor for, since 1984, and a professional planner since 1985. I've appeared before numerous boards throughout the state, including this one and similar matters.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just before I hand it over to Mr. Lanza Fama, one thing I did forget in my summary was, we did originally, over a year ago, file an application with this board seeking the same similar type of development, but with a number of more units. I think we had at that point, we had, we're proposing sixteen residential units.
Sixteen to seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen, I apologize. And then when we heard the board's concerns about the parking and the issues regarding the density, that's when we withdrew the application, redesigned it, and came back before the board with this new proposal with thirteen residential units. And at that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Mr. Lanza Fama.
The property in question, as Mr. Sordillo pointed out, is 258-260 Washington Avenue. It's tax lot ten and block eighty-seven oh one. Uh, the property is approximately eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-six square feet and socks. Has a seventy-five-foot frontage, a little irregular in shape, a hundred and seventy-nine feet deep. The property is located in the B.C. zone, and the property is located on the eastern side of Washington Avenue, uh, just, uh, just, uh, just south of Holmes and between Holmes and Academy. Uh, the property itself.
Is that, Mr. Lanza Fama, are those the plans that the board has?
Yes, these are the plans that the board has. They should have a date of February tenth, twenty fifteen, prepared under my signature by my office. Washington Avenue on what we're, I'm looking at at this moment, is sheet number two in your set of plans, which is the existing conditions map for title and topographic survey. At the bottom of the sheet is Washington Avenue. Uh, the particular property is what's referred to in zoning as a through lot, since Valley Street runs along the backside of the property. There is a significant grade differential of about twenty-five feet from Washington Avenue down to Valley Street. So between the through lot configuration and the significant topographic features, we had certain practical difficulties with the development of the property. Uh, there's the existing three-story element of the building, which fronts directly on Washington Avenue. It's the rectangle that I'm highlighting at the moment on sheet number two. Uh, to the rear of that is a roughly forty-by-eighty-foot section of the building. That's currently a two-and-a-half-story concrete block that sits down a full story below the street. The proposal that we have at hand is to, and this has been colorized to help the board see what we're doing in the way of the development, so we can mark that as A four.
Eight-four, I think we wrote. Shells up, do you have? Eight-four.
Yep. So what I've done is I've marked sheet three, the site plan, with colorization as eight-four with today's date and my initials. And as you can see, we've taken the existing structure and highlighted it in a beige tone. And you can see that the proposal is to basically take the front portion of the building, the lower level, and create two retail spaces, one of about eight hundred square feet, the other of about six hundred and ten square feet. Above that would be multiple stories of apartments. And to the rear, we are proposing to add a third story onto the building that would create three stories of residential units for a total of thirteen units. We would have eleven two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. Uh, to support the application with parking, we're proposing to create a parking garage in the rear of the building where we can place three cars. Further to the east, directly behind the building and with access to Valley, we'll be parking for ten vehicles. There will be a handicap spot located in the northwest corner of the parking lot. Um, a stair tower will be developed along the northern side of the building to provide for safe fire access to all the floors. Uh, obviously, there will be an elevator in the building. Uh, there would be trash storage just to the northeast of that stair tower. And the net result of the improvements that we're proposing is actually a slight reduction in impervious coverage. Uh, as a result of the removal of some of the existing asphalt and concrete along the north side and rear of the building. As I said, we end up slightly reducing the impervious areas on the site. As part of our design concept, we're proposing to add shade tree and some hedges along the periphery of the development to help minimize the impacts of the parking area being in what's technically a front yard. This property would have two front yards. In addition, we are proposing a dry well to capture all of the roof water. So we're getting a further benefit from the development in, by reducing significantly the amount of runoff that currently comes off the property. Um, as part of the application, we are also providing for some lighting on the site that will illuminate the parking area. The, the overall statistics of the property, the thirteen dwelling units equates to a density of about forty-nine point seven dwelling units per acre. The setbacks for the building, the front setback is basically directly on the property line, as is the back corner, the southeast corner of the rectangular front portion of the building. So technically, there's no side yard at that point, and the building is right on the street line. The building is set some seventy-two feet back from Valley Street. Uh, we talked about the lot coverage of the building would slightly go up from five thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet, or forty-five point six percent of the site, to five thousand three hundred and forty-two square feet, which is forty-six point nine percent of the site. The parking requirements, under the residential site improvement standards, require that we have one point eight cars for each of the one-bedroom apartments. And we have two cars for each of the two-bedroom apartments. And the retail space requires one car per two hundred square feet. So the total of the required number of parking spaces becomes thirty-three. What we're proposing on the site is thirteen, so you're seeing a deviation of twenty vehicles. Now, keep in mind that this particular application is for a use variance. The B.C. zone, it was designed to primarily accommodate office space or adult education-type facilities, things of that sort. However, this particular location, along Washington Avenue, which is the bus route for bus number thirteen, uh, provides an opportunity here to fill in and develop the property in, in a manner which, in my opinion, is more consistent with the eclectic nature of the neighborhood. Looking at, it's marked this as exhibit A five.
Just indicate what it is, Mr. Lanza Fama.
Sure, it's an aerial photograph taken from Bing maps of the property as well as the surrounding area. And it was prepared through my office. And what I've done here is I've highlighted the subject property in yellow. You can see it right in the center of the image that I have before you. And starting from the far left-hand side, we have the Verizon property. You have Belleville High School immediately across the street with their parking area. And you have a variety of uses to the north. You have a funeral parlor, there's a barber shop, there's a state farm, a real estate office. Many of these buildings have apartments on the second floor. And then to the south, you have the Elks, you have a medical facility, you have a large apartment facility. This vacant lot that you see here is actually the site of a similar type use. Another mixed-use building that was recently constructed on the site. So you can see that this blends nicely with the character of the neighborhood that exists in that area. The, uh, the zoning, as I said, is, in the B.C. zone, was geared towards office-type use. The office uses in this particular facility, you took this building and renovated it into office space. You have over thirteen thousand square feet of office space. At a parking ratio of one car per three hundred, you have a parking demand of over forty-three parking spaces. So I think the proposal that we are putting forward is actually less of a demand on the available parking in the area, especially with the fact that we are providing some parking. There is also parking available, as you can see, along Washington Avenue. There's metered parking on both sides of the street. Uh, I've visited the site on about three or four occasions in the evening, from about six to seven-thirty P.M., to get a sense of what was available. Because when you look at mixed-use facilities, you have to consider the shared parking characteristics that occur between the commercial uses on the ground floor and the residential uses on the upper floor. For example, um, in the evening hours, the residential uses require full parking, hundred percent. Whereas the retail-type uses go down to about five with ten percent, especially as the day progresses. So you have this symbiotic relationship between the retail spaces and the residential above. Keeping in mind that this type of use is exactly what the state is trying to put forward in its efforts to redevelop the more urban areas of the state where infrastructure already exists. That is sewer and water demand, mass transportation is readily available. You'd want to bring people back into the cities to revitalize the areas. So based upon this information, my argument would be to you that this site is particularly suited for this use, as we are proposing it. Its location along the main business corridor and access to bus routes, New Jersey Transit Route number thirteen, along Washington Avenue makes this an ideal location. The idea of blending business and residential opportunities create a means by which older downtown districts can remake themselves into attractive places for the community. Other purposes of the Land Use Act being advanced aesthetics. Here you have an opportunity to revitalize this old structure that had some historic significance to the township of Belleville. You have the opportunity to provide improved housing stock. You meet the state's master plan of improving existing properties where existing infrastructure exists. Finally, when we look at the purposes of the municipal land use law, they cite a, a number of specific purposes and goals. And by advancing one of these goals, you're meeting the positive criteria requirement. By advancing any one of these goals, you're meeting the positive criteria requirement stated within the municipal land use law for A D or use variance. Uh, and some of those items that are advanced or are purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of housing options to meet the needs of the community. Item I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. And P, to enable municipalities the flexibility to offer alternatives to traditional development in order to concentrate development in areas where growth has been accommodated. In addition to the, the positive criteria, there's also this enhanced burden proof, where we have to talk about how this fits into the master plan. And there's a number of goals and objectives cited in your two thousand nine master plan. The first one, and I'm taking excerpts from the master plan, is to encourage a wide variety of housing types at a range of sale and rental levels, so that all the residents of Belleville could be benefited. And number two, encourage a balance of land uses to include diversified residential areas, commercial areas to serve the residents of Belleville. And finally, number twelve, to enhance community appearance and the visual environment by encouraging good design for the new and rehabilitated building. The final hurdle that we have to overcome is the negative criteria. And this is probably our most difficult situation for this particular project. Because we're looking at a use and a density that seems to be over the top. And what we have, the test we have to make and test ourselves against is can this property support what we are proposing? The fourteen hundred and ten square feet of retail space and thirteen apartments. And the question becomes not so much as far as bulk, because I don't think the building is certainly not being expanded to the extent that would be onerous to the adjoining property owners. The front portion of the building, as you view it from the street, will remain unchanged. The setbacks for the building from the street and from its initial side setbacks will remain unchanged. It's only that additional floor that's being added to the back. And the only area to the back is the railroad and the other commercial properties, the large truck storage area, as well as some other commercial properties. So you're not seeing a significant impact with regard to the bulk of the building. But does the density, does the thirteen apartments put a burden on the available parking? And based upon the fact that we're providing thirteen parking spaces, and granted, two of the spaces are tandem, so technically, they have to go to one apartment. So you're really looking at twelve apartments having at least one parking spot. And the fact that there is available parking in the evening hours along Washington Avenue, I think supports this particular application. You have a situation where you're reducing impervious area. You're taking a piece of property that has basically been an eyesore and a blight along the street. And here you are renovating it, bringing it back to its original character. We're preserving the brick and some of the other elements that the original building put forward in its original architecture. So in my opinion, I believe that we've met the test, that the statement. that the statement that this is not going to have a substantial detriment on the municipality or its municipal land use law, or the municipal land use law, or the adjoining property owners, is a fair statement that it will not have that substantial detriment. So therefore, we've met the hurdles. We've met the positive criteria by advancing some of those goals and objectives of the master plan as well as the municipal land use law. The negative criteria, I think we've met, or I think we can demonstrate that it's not going to have a substantial impact on the zone plan or the township as a whole. And I think there's certainly some real positives associated with this application. There are a number of bulk issues associated with this property. Specifically, you're talking about a through lot, so the parking in the back is technically parking in the front yard. The parking is also not setback a minimum of five feet as required by your ordinance. The parking stalls being proposed are nine by eighteen, which are consistent with the residential site improvement standards. However, your ordinance requires nine by nineteen parks. We received letters from Mr. Huritz, both engineering and planning issues. I don't see any difficulties in meeting all of his requirements with regard to the engineering issues. I can certainly make some modifications to the parallel parking spaces to improve their accessibility. We could increase the size of the refuse area to make sure that we have adequate room for all the tenants and the retail space. So in my opinion, again, I feel that this application is a real positive for the municipality. I think it's a win-win for everybody. And I can entertain any questions. I'm sure you can't wait.
Mr. Onze-Prom, if I can just ask one follow-up question, because I think I heard you say it, but I just want to make sure myself, is that while we know parking is one of the biggest potential negative impacts resulting of this development, but if the site was developed per permitted use as an office, the parking demand would actually be higher than what the demand is based upon the current application?
Absolutely, that's correct. It's forty-three cars for an office building with this application. If you follow the letter of the law, the zoning ordinance with residential site improvement standards, it would be thirty-three. However, when you look at that shared parking arrangement that you have between retail and residential, you usually can reduce that number by about twenty-five percent. So I think if we can safely say that we have, in this particular case, at least one car for every apartment, say one, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you very much.
Questions of the board of the witness? Mr. Belano, I can tell.
Go back to the site plan?
Sure.
The refuse would be located just off, there's a rear entrance at the building. This is a staircase. It would be located in this area. And this could be expanded somewhat and maybe pulled down on the backside of the building to make sure we have.
How's it ever collect?
It gets collected by a private carding firm. They would come in, back in position, and these would be carted out into the truck. You can't turn around, the site is just too narrow. You would have to back.
How many times a week do you know?
That remains to be seen. With a private carding firm, you could range that. It depends on how much refuse is generated. The thirteen apartments, you're probably looking twice a week.
Plus the commercial.
Plus the commercial.
So if you didn't put the addition on, eleven apartments.
And can I ask you a question on ten?
Yes, sir.
Not the ten, I'm talking about the three apartments. How many are two bedrooms and how many are one?
Eleven.
Well, the question is, of the three bedrooms that would be, or two, of the three apartments that would be eliminated and the addition, I believe there were all two bedrooms. I believe so.
Are you going to move that fence that's on the Niggle and put it on the parking lot?
Yes, the fence would be relocated to the parking lot.
And the other parking lot will be at all?
Yes, there'll be a fence along this common boundary to two apartments.
I don't know if you'd be able to answer this question or not. Maybe carry your mic. But you had mentioned in your testimony that the residential and commercial would share spaces. And at night, of course, the commercial will close and the residential will fill up. Do you know the hours of operation for your commercial use?
We don't have tenants yet. This is speculative at this point. But most likely, for retail, you're probably looking at nine or ten A.M. to probably five or six A.M.
The reason I ask is because your testimony stated that they would share spaces.
Correct. There would be, the retail spaces, only fourteen hundred square feet. They would utilize the largest parking.
I agree, but your testimony stated that they would share.
Well, what I'm saying is that you can get this symbiotic relationship between commercial uses. Employees, for example, that might come here could possibly use one of these spaces in the back while the apartments are vacant, while people are at work. And as they left, then that would be occupied by apartment lot. So there wouldn't necessarily be assigned parking spaces.
I should say, there are assigned spaces.
No. Other than maybe these two, the tandem ones would have to be signed. Because they would go to one of the two bedrooms. Well, these garage spaces, most likely they would be used here and be an additional rent charge for that typically. So they would be.
Again, I understand that in today's day and age with the demand of two spots, you put one for eight. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's two spots.
Okay. We rounded it up.
So my argument is that, you know, in many applications, I'm sure you've heard of many applications, that we don't get the parking exactly the way they want. You know, we might fall short by a certain percentage. But if you want short, like you said.
Well, I think what you have to look at is the residential site improvement standards are more geared towards suburban environment. In the more urban areas where mass transportation is readily available, say for example, in Hobo, New Jersey City, the parking requirement is only point six five cars per morning.
Right, and I knew you, I'm going to go back. Did you show me a point six five car?
No, the idea is because you averaged it. Because you averaged it over the entire area. But I think, to respond to your argument, I think from a practical point of view, I think if we can safely say that we are going to have at least one parking space for every apartment, I think we're one short.
Not even that. You're not even assigned. You can't even tell me that apartment X has that parking spot. You can't. Because somebody from the, somebody driving by could go in there. Somebody going to the store could go in there. It's, you don't even have, you know. And again, don't leave me. I'm sympathetic to, and some people say probably too sympathetic sometimes. Not everybody likes my kind of stuff. To not having full parking, you know, one for one or two for, I kind of get that. But again, it's just my opinion. Others might feel differently. And the other thing is, normally in parking, you know, it's not a great idea to have you have two parallel.
Actually, we're.
Three parallel.
But we're going to adjust, make them a little wider.
A and B, so you know as well as I know, and I'm sorry, we don't want to talk about it, during the winter months where we're plowing. So now we're further out from where we normally would be parking. And so, and that trash person has backed up into cars that are further out on both sides as well as them backing out. So, and in my head, like you said, if you had a two-thirds number, and believe it, people don't even, I know the number that's written on here, don't like to hear me say that, because two-thirds is not a hundred percent. But you have one-third of that. And I must be honest with you, that's my biggest concern. And I don't understand why, quite frankly here, you know, you talk about revitalizing, right? And I get you, I'm on board with you. But you're not just revitalizing. You're adding too. And I understand the ROI, return on investment. I get it. But, you know, we have to decide when the return on investment is.
Overburdenous when it comes to how much we're willing to flex. And that's all I have.
I'd like to just respond.
Please.
You put out a lot.
I'm sorry.
Let's start with people driving in and utilizing the parking field that are not a resident or an employee. This can certainly be signed and monitored so that that does not happen. People driving along utilizing the retail spaces, most likely not even be aware that this parking field is back here unless they did a complete loop. You know, this is a one-way going north, so you'd have to come all the way around and come down along the railroad tracks then. So I don't think that is a real concern. As far as the snow removal, we do have some area along that common boundary with the Alps where we could dispose of some of the snow. And there also is the ability to just instruct the snow removal company to cart it off-site. We've done that on a number of applications in urban environments. And we have to pay for it.
And I knew you. But that's, you know, and we have a police, call enforcement. That's enforcement, you know, that's police. And you know what I mean.
I know, but in any event, you can't assume that all these negative things are going to happen.
And handicap is for the apartment building?
That would be the apartment building.
Not for the.
No, you have two handicap spots that are located right along the street. And there's an upgrade entrance to the retail space. Yes, there's two handicap parking spots that are dedicated right in front of the Alps.
Yeah, but they're to individuals.
There's a sign, there's a handicap parking sign.
And they're to whom? To that building.
Alps.
You can't use that.
We can't say that they're.
Why, you can't test.
You can't, you put up a sign that meets the ADA standard. You cannot say that they're dedicated for one specific building on that site, on that street.
I believe you're incorrect. I'm going to tell you why. I use a residential neighborhood, right? I have a handicap.
Yeah, that's different. Residential is different.
Well, again, I'm not a policeman, you are. But it's been my experience. I could be wrong.
So this was subject to Title thirty-nine as well as the statute. So anybody who is not handicapped in parts of those areas will be subject to Title thirty-five, I assume.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if you can be able to answer this. Are the handicap spaces numbered? Are there placard numbers on the handicap spaces?
There are placards.
If there is a number on the sign, that means.
It's identical.
If they're dedicated to a handicap person.
Yeah, that's just a thought.
Sure.
And if I may, just to address one before we go too far off the subject, with regard to the assignment of parking and the concern about anyone using that, I did speak to the client. And it's something that we could, knowing, coming in here, knowing that it's very unlikely a customer is going to utilize, or even know that the rear parking exists, we would agree as a condition of approval if it's the voice suggestion that we do have all the parking assigned and that we could have a permit-type system where the employees and the residents could share spark parking, but it would all be permit and all be regulated by the building to avoid any, some of that concern. I know it's still, we'd still be deficient on the required number, but it would at least help.
I'd probably ask a question. Can you get from the back parking lot to the much as that?
You come in the building and then you can take the elevator to various quarters. Is that right? Yes. Yeah, it's all new construction. The whole building, you can't do that now. You can't do that now.
That's all I have, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's go first.
I have one question about the parking. Earlier, Mr. Onze-Prom, you gave the argument that in the evening time, some of the residential spillover could utilize Washington Avenue for parking. There's just maybe one problem there. At the last town council meeting, now you're probably aware that just about two hundred feet to the southwest of your building, there's a small college. And the residents in that area at the last council meeting showed up in force complaining that the spillover from the college, that they can't find any parking for their own homes through nine, ten P.M., most weekday evenings. So I'm just wondering, a lot of your thesis is based on the idea that there isn't any other demand for those parking spots on Washington Avenue. But the residents in that area, especially around the college, would argue with you that that parking is tied up through a good part of the evening by the students at that college. So I wonder, you know, how this is going to work out.
I did go out there a number of times. Granted, I had gone out initially in August. And I thought about that very question. So I went back in September, actually earlier this week, to see what the situation was. There were more cars occupying spots, but there were still spots open. There were even some spots open actually further down along Valley that were legal parking spaces that could be utilized. So there is the opportunity. Granted, it's, you know, you're talking about one of those tenants not being able to park. And if they have to find an area that maybe a block or two or three away, that's not unusual in urban environments where people have to do that. Yes, sir.
From the rear, you go into the doorway to get upstairs, correct?
Correct.
Would that be open access or restricted?
Most likely it would be restricted by some kind of buzzer. I would believe by the.
Buzzer, key card or something?
Swipe card or buzzer or something.
Okay.
That's good.
If it's restricted, how would someone from the back get to the front stores if it's restricted?
Well, the idea was that you wouldn't have customers parking in the back. However, you might be able to make some kind of arrangement as a buzzer system to access the store, things of that sort. There's a number of ways to deal with the grade differential and the difficulties attached to this property. This is not unusual for urban areas to have to deal with these issues.
Unless I tell by parks in the back and they want to go to most businesses on that avenue. There's an entrance from the back, parking lot.
If someone parks in the back and wants to frequent one of the other stores on the avenue, I don't think there's a way to do that.
No, the answer is no.
And they would have to come up on the way to the front door.
Yeah, and they'd have to go through. Well, they could come through the corridor. I guess technically they could do it. They would get themselves in there.
Any other questions for members of the board? All right, now I'll ask my question.
Go ahead, sir.
First thing, can you put the picture?
Sure.
Now, I believe, where is your building?
Our building is right here.
That's your building?
Yes, sir.
Now, go across the street and go to the right, a little bit to the right. And I believe that's the college.
That is, sir. Yeah, that is.
That is the college.
Yep.
So how far would you say that is from your building?
Just directly across the street, maybe a hundred feet.
Hundred feet, okay. So like Mr. Shelton mentioned, there was a number of neighbors in Forest for the last town council meeting complaining about parking. Now, my question is this. Is it your experience, especially in an area like Washington Avenue, it's not like a mall, that most stores depend upon the business, usually operate during the day, and the evening hours depend, of course, upon the business? If we're talking about pizzerias, another story, okay? That they're not being utilized, usually?
The stores?
The stores.
The stores are not being utilized.
Okay. So now, you're sure, because it says you have to have thirty-three parking spaces, of which seven are for the two stores? Okay, so if you take the seven off of the two stores, then it would bring you down to twenty-six. If you eliminate the three two-bedrooms, because you want to make an addition, and say there's no addition made, and you eliminate the three two-bedrooms, now you're down to twenty parking spaces. Am I correct?
That's right.
How many? Um, how many units? Because now we're down to, let's see, we're down to...
Ten units.
Ten units, exactly.
You would have...
Would you be able to, to handle parking in the back then?
I, I believe you can handle parking with the 13, so absolutely you can handle.
Well, you're saying if you can't, you're saying you can only handle for 12.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that the overflow would be accommodated either by parking on Valley or on Washington. And we're only talking about one vehicle, most likely.
Now, you said how many, how many tandem places? How many tandem?
Just, just the one.
There's only one tandem?
One tandem situation.
Okay.
So, so in essence, you have 11 accessible vehicles, uh, 12 accessible.
12 accessible vehicles of which, um, 10 are single, correct?
No, no.
Or I'm, I'm not getting the right message.
Let's, let's look at the site plan. You have, you have 10 fully accessible parking spaces at the rear.
Right.
You have three in the garage. This one spot would have to go with the parking, with the car directly behind it, which would be, have to be assigned to one of the two bedrooms. The one immediately adjacent to it could easily access through its own garage.
All right, say that, say...
I don't understand why you say that.
Let's take the garage off. Let's just say the parking spaces that were in the back without the garage.
Okay.
How many did you say you had?
10.
10, okay. If I have Mr. Long.
I don't know why you say that, okay? A one-bedroom needs how many spots?
I, I know what the residential site improvement standards say, however, however.
What does our orderment say?
Two.
Okay, that's what I go by.
No, well, actually, you're supposed to go by the residential site improvement standards. They, they, and, and your section...
Like, give me 1.8 cars. It's two, Mr. Gachion. Yeah, Sean, you can shake your head all you want. It's two. You must go substantially on 1.8 car.
Maybe you want a compact.
Legally, legally, the applicant's correct. And this came up in an earlier application, I just want to clarify.
Listen, I understand that, but...
RSIS takes supremacy, but municipalities are able to adjust it downward if, if they need, if there's transportation.
Right, but our ordinance does not adjust it downward, right?
You're, the ordinance here is two, RSIS is one point eight.
So, again, I'm sticking to my position, 1.8 means two.
And there's, and there's another section in the residential site improvement standards under parking is when there is a mixed-use project and there's mass transportation available, you, the board has the ability to lower that number even further.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
However, what I'm challenging you now is that when you testified to our chairman that you would have to give that two-bedroom, those two spots, to a two-bedroom. No, you don't. You can give it to a one-bedroom.
Okay.
Because they get two spots.
Logical thing, you can give it to two.
Right, it's more, it's more, it's more effective.
Not even logical. It's 1.8. You still give them two spots.
That's actually just...
That's my point. And I give them 1.8 spots and give them two spots. Because a spot has a certain size criteria, does it not? So whether you want to call it 0.8 at the spot, okay. What's the criteria, Mr. Chairman, at the size of a 0.8 spot? It's still the same. Is it not?
Yes, we're not arguing that with you.
All right, so, yeah.
And I, and I would concede.
You can go to, you can go to, you can go to more, you can reduce it to more one-bedroom, like, and get closer to the parking requirement of, 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 of...
To what happens if you do all one-bedrooms. You're not meeting the demands of all the residents of Belvoir. There are families, there are people that...
Well, do you respect some, are you familiar with Belvoir?
I grew up in Zurich and I, I...
Look, you know, and I'm, I've lived here very long. And I've been the first one to tell you, a lot of people might not hear me say this. I'm all for development and redevelopment, okay? But I don't think, and be fair to say, that Belvoir has a shortage of apartments supplied. And I would challenge anyone to say whether we have a shortage. You want to say, you know, some people have a different standard than others, you know? You know, as far as what they want to live in, a newer versus...
Right.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that. But to say we have a shortage, I don't, you know, I would challenge that. Somebody would have to show me, and as a realtor, I have to be full disclosure. As a realtor, I would challenge that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask...
Can I ask one question before we go, since we got into this RSIS business?
Sure, okay.
I want to ask you a question. Is there a requirement on the RSIS for visitors?
It's built into the standard. It's built into, for example, the two parking spaces for a two-bedroom union assumes about half car is dedicated for a visit. It's killing them, I can see that. Sorry.
That's okay, I, I'm listening. You're doing a job, and I, and I respect you for that.
I just, I, I just asked a question.
Well, I, I read somewhere...
I'm done, I'm on.
Yeah, it's built into the number.
I'm, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask a few follow-up questions.
Sure, 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 redirect question.
Is, um, uh, you know, we're talking, we're talking about, you know, the requirements for what we're proposing, which is requiring use variance because we're looking to do some residential where residential is not permitted. But I, I, you know, just going back to what Mr. Wansafan testified previously with regard to what would be permitted would be a much higher requirement. So, Mr. Wansafan, if you can really just address maybe the site itself, to even be able to develop it in any way to make it usable, whether it's residential, commercial, no matter what it's going to be, there's going to be a parking deficit. And actually, and you correct me if I'm wrong in saying it, but what we're proposing is a much lesser deficit than would be required. So it would even be more than two-thirds missing, it would be...
You know I'm not gonna let that fly.
But, but that's, okay, if you, if you look at it from that perspective, you know, besides, uh, there, there's two ways to approve the new areas. One is that you demonstrate that the property is particularly suited and advances the whole trajectory of the municipal land. So the other way is, is it a hardship? Is the property really developable as it is zone for? And, and when you get to this question of parking, you start to raise that question. Is it really developable as an office space if you have a parking demand of 33-plus cars? And the answer is no, that you would always have some type of a parking rent, no matter how this property were developed, even if it wasn't edited.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that building always an office building?
It was.
It was an office building for 100 years and now it was a problem?
Well, there's a whole different mindset about parking and how people visit the site.
What was the parking demand of Mr. Gachion back in 1955?
Oh! Would you please state your name?
Like, because, unlike, just like you, I happen to have that notice at home. I didn't wear it, but...
But I believe in 1955, Mr. Gachion was only about 15 years old. Forty, forty.
So we have to really give you... I'm only saying to your point, that, you know, I would have to hold out and see what was required back then. You're, he cited present-day requirements.
Well, yeah, and the point though being, anything that gets developed has to be renovated, it's fine, you can't look back at the old office standards.
Right, but it would be known as a pre-existing.
Well, no, it's been abandoned. The ba, the building's basically empty, it's been abandoned. So any, any application to the planning board for development of that particular property as an office building would have to see the front door.
Well, wait a minute, wait, why would we have to see that? That's a, a three of the speakers.
Like, he's saying it's abandoned.
Because it's abandoned, it's vacant.
A vacant, I don't believe, some other abandoned. It's a year, correct?
Well, well, it's, it has to be...
Well, I understand we have to have a very fact-sensitive...
Yeah, yeah, but I get your point.
There has to be a ten.
Yeah, that's my point, a ten.
It's, it's a mixed...
But it's, it's my testimony that it's a, it's a benefit that development as a mixed use, in my opinion, makes more sense than the way it's been done. Well, that's, that's the, that's the premise of my argument. Whether, and, and the question that you have to wrestle with is, is it two-decked? And, and do we have to make some adjustment in either the number of units, the bedrooms, the retail space or something? That, that makes the board feel comfortable with this application? So the first whole question is, is the use appropriate? And then the second question is the density. So those are the two questions that you really have to wrestle with.
I mean, the price agreement...
There we go.
Are there any other questions, my members of the board? I will now open it to the public to ask questions based on testimony given. Mr. Frin and Collins, name and address.
Mr. Frin, I'm doing 129 on property. Um, there, before going further, I think one or four members of the crew are asking a question, you may be confused. On this picture you have up now, the backyard, you have, it's outlined in bold green, right? And then there's another lighted green angle on the right side.
Right. The darker green represents a shrub or a hedge, the lighter green represents lawn panel.
Right, but your property in the back is not rectangular.
It is not. See this line that runs right through here?
Exactly.
That's, that's...
The reason I brought up is, Mr. Caruso asked you if you were going to move the fence at a property lot. The fence is on an angle because the property is on an angle, correct?
The fence, well, the fence location now, the last time I drove a taxi, it looks like the fence has been pushed all the way over. Looks like it's approaching the property.
Your rear property is not parallel to the wall.
Is not perpendicular to the street.
Right, the one southern line is on an angle.
No dispute there. You don't want to get into a surveying question.
You've got a lot of education like that in the picture. Also, you said there's going to be a slight reduction in impervious coating.
That is correct.
And tell me how you're going to choose that?
Removing some of the asphalt and concrete. If you look at the existing script, this area immediately to the north of the building is all concrete. That's all going to be removed and lawn panel placed, as well as this area through the sa, along the south side of the building. All that concrete is coming out of the lawn panel.
So lawn pa, grass? You said lawn, not grass?
Yes, yes.
It's going to be...
I hope so.
Your head said you'll be reducing the runoff by installing a drywall.
Correct, sir.
Where will the drywall be installed?
If you refer to sheet number four, I believe it is, on the set of plans, we're proposing a series of three drywells in the middle of the parking lot. The roof water would connect to the drywells. There would be an overflow that would come down and connect to the existing storm sewer in the valley.
Underground?
Underground, it would be underground, I didn't see it at all.
You would be putting a, what site, pipe?
It's, they're drywells. They're, they're eight-foot diameter precast concrete tanks that are installed with crushed stone around them. And that will allow the water to be absorbed.
Then there'll be a leader connecting to our storm sewer?
There would be, the roof leaders from the building would connect to the drywells. And once, if the drywells filled up to a point where the ground can go down and the handle run along it, it would overflow and that would connect to the storm sewer out on Valley.
Why are we going all the way north?
Because that's the only place the storm sewer is.
You know storm sewer in the middle of Valley Street?
No, there isn't.
None of it. Okay. Now, you've said you've visited the site several times between 6:00 PM and 7:30 AM. Is that correct? Have you ever visited the site during the day?
Uh, several times.
On what days?
Usually during the week, I don't know exactly the days. When we first got involved with the project, we came to the site a number of times to look at it with the, with the purchaser, to meet him, to walk the area, walking over there to do that typically. And then when we performed a survey, we were there during the daylight hours.
Now, let's get to the, the shared parking. Um, are you, do you, uh, retail is only, like you said, nine, six, nine, five, six? And most people work during the day? Is that your...
That, that's the, that's the thought pattern, the models that have been developed by your land institute, the ITE, with regard to the shared parking concept?
Uh, we can read the average, although in my own tidework, varies out. But the average work week is Monday through Friday.
Correct.
Um, I was in retail for 15 years and I'm a merchant for 50 years. I'm Washington, Connecticut. Um, the busiest day of your week for retail and shopping is Saturday?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, what happens on Saturday? When all people are home and it's the busiest retail?
Well, the reason the, the retail space is so busy is because the people who live in the residential areas are out and about, driving around. So you still get that symbiotic relationship between residential and...
You're obviously, these people relax on a Saturday and the business having the busiest shopping day of the week.
Well, that's why, in my opinion, the retail space is only 1,400 square feet, two, two stores possibly, is going to be basically utilized by people that were parking on Washington Avenue or along some of the major arteries or coming to build bus routes. So I, I don't believe that the, uh, the fact that there is a more intense use for the retail on a Saturday is necessarily going to be clicked with the available parking in the back section of the set.
For the record, I have a 700 square foot business and I'm killed outside because there's no parking. I'm like 700 square foot, aside to that.
But our, our thought process is that the, the back parking lot is, unless you frequent that store on a regular basis and you know that parking lot is back, you're not going to go seek that out because there's no direct access from that parking lot directly to the store other than through the back door, up an elevator, and then a car. Most people like to park right in front of the store, right very close to the store. So I, I really don't think it's going to be a major issue for us.
And one other thing is the intention. What's that been made for? What, you're saying the intention is what?
It's 13, right, it's a proposal.
Right. And your, I didn't want to, your lips were pretty tiny, a square foot to your front?
Uh, 11,795 square feet. Oh, you want to know the actual density per acre?
Yes.
It comes out to 49.7. Which is, if you look at the BG zone, the 20,000 square foot lots, it's 51.3. It would be very similar to the BG.
About 49.7.
Seven.
Thank you. 0.7.
I'm telling him, I'm killing him with these decimals.
He mentioned about the store, he didn't mention... Oh, Joe Medler, 254 Washington Avenue. You mentioned about your store. Where are the employees going to park on that, on the avenue?
Uh, they could park on the avenue, or as I said, you might, you might have some of the employees parking in the back during the day while the residents are...
But you, are you aware of that new building that's being constructed? Or that and all the apartments is a fire zone? Right now, they're parking there, they're letting it get away with it. It's a fire zone.
That, yes, this area to the south is a whole fire zone, I agree. I didn't, I didn't consider it.
Right now, those two stores and that new building, they can't rent because there's no parking. There's not enough parking on Washington Avenue.
Can't get testimony, you can only have...
I know, you can't tell them, I know.
You can get testimony of it.
He mentioned two-stack parking. He's got three-stack parking on this side too, in the back. They're not stacked, they're three separate cars, line, front, back, and the other.
They're all parallel.
Right. So it's not all that parked. You mentioned about doing a thing on all this concrete. How are you going to take it down? How are you going to take it down? You can't come on our property. We don't want you on our property.
We don't plan on that.
Okay.
We don't want you on our property.
Joey, he got you. Now, you put a doorway in the side. That's on the other guy's. But you're going to put a sidewalk on this side of the building by our side.
Right here.
By our side.
No.
How are you going to get in that doorway? Not that side. Yeah, there's a doorway on this side.
The doorway here.
No, on this side of the building, you're putting a doorway. You didn't testify that the other guy.
Why don't you let, hold on, can you answer the question first? So you're both.
Let me check the architectural plans. There is no door on either side of the building. There's a man door and a garage door on the, on the back side of the, the rest side of the building. Just checking the elevations from the architect. The doorways that you're referring to, if you look on sheet A2 on the architectural plan, you're seeing doorways.
Not there.
Here and here. But those are access to balconies that are for purposes.
When the guy testified, he said there's going to be a door on the side by the elves.
There was no door on the side by the elves.
Unless he testified. And I know you weren't trying to testify.
He was mistaken because the elevations and the floor plans do not indicate any doorways on the outside. There isn't. And there is, I believe, there is an existing door that's going to be, let me.
There was no door on that side.
Staircase according to.
Oh, yeah, that way in the back.
That will be. Right, that will be.
But he said he was putting a doorway inside.
Well, we're putting a doorway on this side. We're putting this stair tower.
On that side.
So there'll be a door that comes out into the stair tower here and exits towards the rear of the parking lot. The rear building, which is.
The reason we're saying we don't want you on our property, when they built their garage in the back, they come upon our property. If you look at our lawn in the back, it's got caving in it. They never fixed it.
You're talking about this property in terms of the south.
That's why we don't want no construction equipment on our side.
We, we didn't do that.
Oh, we didn't, did you? But they're not considering any employees. But they don't have as much parking as you say in Washington Avenue.
Any other?
Like the board said, it was a big issue at the last town meeting.
Any other members of the public, yes, name and address.
Tom Grohlman, 163 Valley Street.
Say that again.
Tom Grohlman, G-R-O-L-I-M-O-N-D, 163 Valley Street.
Thank you.
Did you testify that there were parking spaces along Valley Street when you were buying in the daytime? Were they on the east or west side of the street?
They were on the west side of the street. They were parking spaces located along, and you can see them parked here, but there must be some parking spaces further down.
Hold it, hold it, hold the court's hands.
Okay, there's some parking along Valley. At the start, at the Verizon, there's 10 parking spots that they park their trucks in. And then there's a couple of sections right through here. There's a residential property here in the back of the funeral home. There was a couple of parking spaces. Actually, there's a handicap sign there as well. And then you come further down, you have the townhouses. They each have a parking garage and they show that you park in their driveway. And there's a couple of spots that you could fit in between.
You testified that there was open parking spaces.
Right, they were.
One at, one at a time, please.
They were open parking, in other words, they were available. Well, I think, granted, I was there for only an hour and a half on four or five occasions. So I don't see, or I didn't see, some of the things that board members were talking about with regard to the adult school and that potential conflict. But when you're, when you're looking at a project of 13 rental spots and you have the ability to park at least 12, you're not talking about a huge impact on the parking that's available along the street. We only really need one parking space, in my opinion. I know I'm getting rolling eyes back here, but that's, that's our experience in these types of developments.
I asked, available parking? And you're telling me about 10 parking spaces on Verizon's parking lot? That's not available parking.
Well, I was trying to give you.
That's Verizon's parking.
I didn't say they're utilizing it. I said that they park their trucks.
I asked, available parking.
I was trying to describe and give the board members the benefit of what I observed as I walked the avenue.
I was on the seat, there's never available parking on all of the parks.
No testimony yet.
Testimony's asked. It's only based on, it's based on testimony. Any other member of the public wishes to question the applicant's witness based upon testimony given? Any further questions by members of the board? Any further witnesses?
Yes, just to address some of the issues that got brought up. One of the, another principal from the applicant would like to just address the board. See if you can play some of those questions.
No problem.
Presenting Peter Rosen.
Could you raise your right hand, please, Mr. Rosen, when you come on up? Come on up. With regard to this application, just for the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth.
Yes.
State your name, explain your last name, please.
Sure, it's Peter Rosenz. B-A-B-O-Y, R-O-S, E-N-S.
B-R-O-S?
E-N-S.
E-N-S, thank you.
Well, first, Mr. Rosenz, can you please explain your position with the applicant and your relationship to this application?
Sure, I'm the owner of the building. You know, when I bought this property two years ago, I, you know, I did the idea that it was a broken-down, dilapidated property and I was going to help the town by fixing it up. But I was going to do it indeed by also making some money at 17 units. It's now down to the point where it's 13 units. I'm not going to get any money. And I don't really see, I guess I'd ask you guys, what do you envision, what is the ideal scenario? You really can't tell anything with the parking product you have.
I need to find out. Be quite frank with you. It's not my job to give you what I believe is the best there because then I couldn't keep an open mind. Respectfully, I understand the whole concept of return on investment. And I'm not saying I sympathize with you on that. But at this point, it's not accustomed in giving, you know, our opinions on it. That's not keeping an open mind of other people's ideas. I didn't, I don't have a vision for it. You know, if I was a principal like yourself, maybe I would. But I'll just say this, we're pretty open to ideas. And again, I think what you need to understand from our point of view is that, you know, as you've heard, we've taken a fairly good amount of criticism by inflexible, if you will. And so maybe we might not be flexible enough for you to make the return on your investment. I'm just telling you my position is. And I'm very outspoken, as you can see right now. And I just think that, again, like I said to your professional, you know, is that, you know, if you were two-thirds of the way there as far as parking went, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen to his argument. I was, I'm not as open-minded with his argument because we're not, we're one-third of the way there. That was my argument. That was my position. So, and, and I support the idea of renovating a, what I believe is still a beautiful building. So the only, the only thing that, as an investor, as yourself, is, if we're being honest with each other, investors very rarely do a town a favor by, you know, I don't buy that concept. Respectfully, I don't.
Well, sure, at 17 units, I was going to make, I was going to make this.
You're not doing us a favor.
Well, I think the town would benefit tremendously by having that program developed.
Well, as being on the other side of the corner, I would, I would tell you this. You know, do you believe you have any children in that building?
No.
No? Two bedrooms?
Oh, children, both of you children? Oh, sure.
Sure. Is that a tax burden on the school system?
Yeah.
You're not doing us a favor. So I can understand your point.
Okay, that's fine.
It's fine, I'm sorry. I understand what this conversation is going, and I don't think it's really appropriate for our application here. And I just.
I'm not accustomed to making suggestions.
But I think maybe, and I respect that and I understand that. I think more of what the question may be is, understanding some of the board's concerns and the feedback we're getting, is there potentially any conditions of approval that could make this application something that the board would be in favor of?
Can I ask? By the way, I worry.
I'd like to ask my counsel.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question first, Mr. Rosen? Before you bought this property, didn't you check out and find out what was allowed to be put there?
I did.
And did you know what was allowed to be put there? That it was only office?
I did. But I thought it was really good a variance because of. And it's been two years and I realized that it's been a difficult time. If, I mean, if this doesn't go through, I know you're two-thirds of the way there, you can put maybe five or six units there.
Say that. I'm saying that, not tight.
I don't want to, I don't want to. My counsel, that.
Well, you've got to remember something.
The site's going to say vacant, right?
You've got to remember something. You're saying five or six units.
No, I'm not saying that.
If he's saying that.
I'm not saying that.
I'm not saying that, he's saying that. How many bedrooms are we talking about there?
So, again, I'll tell you what I always tell everybody. You know, if you don't see it in the first, try and try it again. And that's one of the things that many applicants have come, you know, until, you know, the board sees it to be a decent idea. What I think you're concerned is, and I agree with you, that when we think it might be appropriate, you might not be able to make as good a profit. And I respect it, I understand it. And that's not what I have to consider. And that's not the only thing I must consider.
Of course, there is zero parking for this investment.
I can't.
I'm not, I'm not saying this for that thing.
That's fine. You know, so what kind of, where are the angles?
Okay. Anything else? I don't know if I help them or not, but.
Any members of the public have a question of the applicant? Sir, they have a right to question.
Oh, sure.
And any other members of the board who have a question? President.
Mr. Fran Antoni. Senator, I don't remember that. At the last meeting, I mean, at the main, the applicant, I believe, review or engineer, said, goes down, you need to do addition to make the project that's the extended net second floor. So you need to do this to make the project financially viable.
I, I, I actually, I can address that because I'm the one to say that, I'm going to answer the question from the chairman.
It wasn't this chair.
It wasn't you?
No, no, it wasn't. But I know I said it at first. The only reason I noticed I stumbled through it when I first said it.
He's the acquisition director and I believe I have in my notes that the extra units were needed for financial reasons.
It wasn't this chair.
Make a return.
So the question I had was, how much of the project cost? Because you're renovating the building. And the project cost, there's so much for renovation. But then that new addition, I asked, how much is that? That person says, I don't know, but I will have it for you at the next meeting.
He's going to ask.
No. Do we have the cost of the new construction?
No, we don't, we don't have any cost for constructions and we're not presenting that.
Yeah. I want to stay away from costs because we should not be dealing with making, making a buck or not making a buck. This is on, on, these hearings are based on other, on other things.
I agree with you.
I don't know the reality.
I know the law. The only reason I brought it up because he brought it up.
I understand.
Said it was financially viable, so then I had for a break now. The other thing you just said, you bought a broken-down abandoned building. Do you know the history of the building? Recent history?
Well, I used to know it at the city hall. And then I, I used to know the history.
You know how long it was, Ray?
I guessed around five years, but I'm not sure.
Do you know what was there before the budget?
Commercial use. And they had some, um, clothing stores in the back. I'm not really sure.
You're not sure.
If you don't know, it's fine to say it.
Mr. Fran, Tony, you can't tell unless you give a testimony, see if the way.
I won't be answering them with questions.
And he said no.
Right.
Okay, any other questions of the witness? By members of the board or the public? No? Okay, any other question? Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses. That I would, if the chairman would give me five minutes to consult with the, my client and my professional to see if we may be to address.
I'll tell you what, we'll give, we'll have, we'll, we'll take a recess and reconvene at 10:00 tonight.
Thank you very much, Senator.
I don't know.
Marah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the recess. I had a chance to speak with my client about the application. We heard the board's concerns. We understand the demand for parking. One thing that we would like to offer up as a potential condition of approval, if the board looks favorably on the application, is to remove the addition on the rear of the building. So it would have three less units, the parking, the three less two-bedroom units. So the parking demand would be reduced significantly. And we, the remainder of the application will remain the same. All of the other terms will remain the same and the other conditions that we discussed will remain the same.
Okay.
So you have 13 spaces for 10 residential units?
Correct.
Without the second, without the.
With, without the additional floor in the rear of the building. All, all else remains the same.
I believe you said three of the parking spaces are in the garages, correct?
Three in the garage.
Go ahead.
Uh, three, three in the garage, but only two are associated with each other because of the tenant. So it still seems split up into two separate.
And the back will have 10 parking spaces in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, oh. We didn't ask for testimony yet from the public. Well, now, now we have testimony from the public and now you have the new condition that he's coming up with. So anyone want to give testimony from the public? Mr. Fran Antoni.
Yes, Mr. Fran Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect, here.
This is going to be test, okay, testimony. With regard to this application, do you swear the comments you're about to make shall be the truth?
I do.
And just for the record, state your name, please, and spell your last name.
Vincent Fran Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue, in Baltimore.
Thank you. If he wants you to spell your last name, that's okay. Got it?
Long but simple, Fran Tan Ton.
Is there a Y yet?
No. The, if we certainly like to see things renovated for Spelton, Washington Avenue. And going back 35 years to our 11th century, going forward, I would agree of putting residential over retail. And I gave many reasons, some of them because at night it's not a desolate area to go. However, what I want is within reason, with something that we can afford. The, the parking situation is horrendous. And about a year and a half ago, I filed an appeal with the tax assessor on my property a block away because my business was a loss for six years. And I showed them my income tax returns. I'd lost thousands of dollars on my business every year. The two apartments paid the overheads, but my business was a negative for five, six years. And the main reason is parking. Now, in regards to parking down there, the, it's such a problem. We had signs, but they just put up, the town just put up new signs in the past week saying, which was always the law, but they weren't enforcing it much. You park metered parking from nine to six, but to our limit. So that's another burden on people who live in the area. Again, my pet, I happened to buy a house, my house was built in 1917, so I had no control. I inherited with no parking. But I have a problem every time I rented. Beautiful apartments, they love the apartments, until they say, where do I park? Don't let me park on the street. Thanks, nice apartment, but I have to look elsewhere. So it's definitely a problem if you don't have enough parking. And it's, it destroys it. And then you're pushing the street. Now, you people were all sworn in, I believe Mr. Mafucci was just sworn in. The last meeting, you took it all to uphold the law. This is your zoning ordinance. I have it, I've always had them. I don't know if you people have it, if you've read it. But the purpose, in the first page, the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to regulate restrict the height, numbers, stories, etc., and open spaces, density of population. That's your charge. It also says that the comprehensive plan, this, the doctrine of this comprehensive plan is designed for one or more of the following purposes, and there's seven. Number one, it's your charge, you guys are in charge of the zoning. Number one is pleasant congestion in the street. Now, you've heard testimony, I was also at that meeting, we're above 25 to 40 people from the surrounding areas, Van Houten and High Street complaining. And now something new happened with the college. I believe that they said it's Monday and Wednesday night, they now have night classes. So these residents, if they don't come home before 5 o'clock, they're stuck. They have no parking in the entire area. This is right across the street, like the good gentleman said, it's probably less than 100 feet away. You're going to have more congestion in the streets. The other one is, to number six, is to prevent overcrowding of lands and buildings. Number one, we're dealing with existing building. Number one, we're dealing with existing building, I'm happy now agreed that, to eliminate the extra construction on there. And number six is to avoid undue concentration of population. And this is what your charge for controlling. So I, I hope you take, the law that you're in charge to enforce, I hope you take it seriously. Uh, the other question, I'm glad he's not putting the, uh, the other addition on, but perhaps you can make them one-bedroom apartments, because Mr. Valano says the two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms, I rented, forty-five years, I rent one-bedrooms. One I had about eight years ago, I rented to a lovely couple. Six months after they moved in, they had a kid in a one-bedroom apartment. A year and a half later, they had the second kid, and they lived there for seven years in a one-bedroom apartment, and they were nice people, I couldn't get them out. So the fallacy that one-bedroom apartments don't prove kids, my forty-five years of rental income is a fallacy, you know?
You were trying to get them out, is that what you were saying?
No, I couldn't get them out, because they're, they, when they moved in, they were a young couple.
No, I'm just saying, are you trying to get them out, or you like them because they're a good tenant, so you don't want to get them out?
No, I wanted to get them out because the kids used to play in the laundry mat.
Oh, in your laundry mat?
Yes, on the building's laundry mat. But, uh, I, I'm just trying to tell you that, again, for Mr. Valano says, it's a burden on us because two-bedrooms definitely gonna produce children, and you have, right next door, two doors away or three doors away, is the betting loss apartment. You got one bedroom in there, I'm very familiar with that building because I used to work for previous owner doing repairs in there. You got one-bedroom apartments in there with five, six people living in them, and I know that because some of them, my customers in my laundry mat, they walk around the block there. And it's, it's, so you've got to think of what we're doing. Uh, avoid the undue concentration of population, and again, uh, lessen the congestion in the street. Also, there's a book which you should have read, hit by Glenn C. Heinz Asquires, called The Guide to Planning and Zoning. This should have been mandatory when you people were certi-, I presume you all went to be certified. On page one of that book, it says, "An applicant is never entitled to a variance," and never is italicized, okay? An applicant must meet the specific criteria of the zoning ordinance and all that, and he will need to prove the special reason, the balance of evidence, and all the negative criteria here. So please keep these things in mind, and, let's forget, he left, the architect, Mr. Belafima, the way of the name? No, he said they'd be in during the day.
Lam Zofan.
Who is it?
Want to say it? The, uh, the problem values, all right? In the last two or three years, has been so severely compacted, you can't get anywhere during the day. Right down the street from, from his building, just walk down to the corner of Academy, which is right here, this don't look that deadly, no more. Anybody wants into this meeting? I'll take you for coffee, but first we'll fast pass there. It's gotta be about fifty dump trucks. On this corner, this garage no longer looks like that, it's loaded with dump trucks. They're probably working out, they're working those trucks, ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. One night I left the Alps Club, I'm a member down there, one o'clock in the morning, they're still working on trucks. Not only the cars, like Umba said, parked along Valley Street on the west side, all right? The streets and the gentleman here, Mr. Negli will bring it up, he took some pictures, the entire grass area on the side of the railroad tracks, it's loaded from cars from Rutgers Street to Home Street, between the bullet hole and the other businesses that are there, and it's all day long. And Mr. Giudana's a policeman, he travels that way, I don't know if he sees it, it's every single day on that street. And it's, it's illegal parking, but that's the, the demand for parking that's creating these people parking, and it's a mud hole, because that's not paved, they park on that dirt area, when it rains or snows, they pull out of there, Valley Street is a mess on that entire stretch of land. So this thing that, it's, it's not, um, uh, a bad thing for the town, it is not accurate. And, and again, I ask you to go down and look, that, those areas I'm saying, look nothing like that right now. Right now, you go down and look, and we thank God, I mean, that, the dump trucks, the man's got a very successful business, but what's happening, it's compounding our parking problems. It, it's just the.
Is this on Academy you're talking to?
Yeah. On Valley Street, Valley Street and Academy.
And Academy.
Yeah.
That's where that garage is on the corner.
Right.
The garage on the corner is now, not only is it a garage, right there shows two or three little cars, see the white cars and the black cars there? Right here?
Mm-hmm.
This right now is loaded with dump trucks, I mean, the big dump trucks. They park there, and you'll see them every day, between three and five, they go to Belvill Avenue and Dow Street to gas up. Thank God that guy's doing a good business to and for gas, but they even tire traffic because sometimes they're backed up on Belvill Avenue because all these trucks can't get in the gas station to gas up, and then they park there. This is bumper-to-bumper dump trucks, all right? And all on the railroad, on the rail, right up to the tracks, is cars parked all day long.
Employees.
Employees and all that. So it is a major, major problem, the parking in Belvill, and because of that problem, the value of our properties go down, because I can't rent, uh, two and a half, maybe three years ago, I had an apartment for rent, five months I couldn't rent it because the people loved the apartment, they couldn't get it. Then I had to lower the rent. From eight-thirty-five, I went down to seven, so we went down to seven-ninety-five, psychologically it's under eight-hundred, and then I finally got a tenant. But that's it, but it's a very, very severe problem. So when you approve these things, like I say, I would like to see, um, I thank you for taking off the new construction, I just one request, bring it down to one-bedroom apartments. And again, if the forty-five years old properties, buying old junk and renovating them, you can make the profit. Maybe you're not gonna make as much, but you can make the profit. And if you're not accurate that profit, go into a different business.
Anybody else, yes, sir?
May I just cross-examine?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, hold on, cross-examine.
Just, Mr. Fran Tan To- uh, Tantone, right?
Fran Tan Tone, I apologize.
Uh, are, are you a professional planner?
No.
And did you say that you own apartments around this area?
Block away.
Okay, so you would be in competition with this potential tenant?
All right, I have a laundry mat, I don't know if you know the law.
Well, no, for, for rentals, for residential rentals, you remain competition if, if this gets broken?
You mean, it's another rental, yeah?
Yes.
If you want to consider that, yeah.
No further questions.
Any members of the board have any questions, Mr. Fran Tantone? Any other member of the public has any question, Mr. Tantone?
I don't know.
You want to give testimony, correct?
No question, no question.
All right, you can give testimony now, name and address.
Okay. Joe Negli, 254 Washington Avenue. Been to Old Bar Jammer for the last six years. I got half my members coming in on Monday or Friday nights, I suppose, because there's no parking up. We got more members in parking out back.
Objectively, he's, he has to be sworn in.
Yes.
Sworn in again?
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
And you already stated your name.
Joseph A. Blayover.
Yeah, is he close enough for everyone?
Eh?
Yeah, he's got a loud voice like me.
Yeah. But, uh, like I said, I've been to Bar Jammer for six years. We don't, like they say, we don't end up parking in the back either. We got more members in parking spot. They don't want to come down, they don't want to come down and park on the avenue because there's no spots. Like, they got people come in, they love the hall, I, I know Jerry's been in the hall, Rich, I don't know if you were there.
Well, I've been there for a while.
For a while, but basically the same, we keep it clean. They come in, oh, it's nice, you keep it nice and clean. Where do you park? Street park. Oh, that's no good angle. It's a big detriment, renting the hall. And we need to have all rented, and like I said, all, all renters are paying for what the boys went out to go. This parking is getting worse, especially with these new buildings going up now, fire zones, it's a big detriment, renting the hall.
You want to cross-examine, sir?
Uh, there's a lot of parking that any.
You have to, you have to give them into evidence, they have to be marked into evidence, and who took the picture?
I took the picture yesterday.
Okay.
Is it?
The same spot, you know?
Can you identify what, what the picture is of?
It's Valley Street.
O one, objector one.
O one and O two, because there's two pictures.
O one and O two, and you.
Valley Street, uh, what's that, going that way, what is it?
Uh, north, I believe, because it's only a one-way, so you have to be.
Yeah, I don't know, north. And it was taken yesterday, about, uh, three o'clock.
Both of them?
Both.
O one and O two?
And they're both on Valley, Valley Street?
Basically the same picture, just that I got a whole car and a half a car on one side.
So you're half cars.
You know, I didn't testify to it.
It's a half a car.
Get a smart car.
Now, this is, this is on the railroad track side, right?
Yes, that's between the street and the railroad tracks.
Yeah. But parking is allowed only on the left side.
Right.
They're parking off the street, actually, onto the, on, what would be a sidewalk, if, if there was a sidewalk.
But the thing is, when it rains or snows, it, a little more, they bring it out on the road, that's why it's, a lot of always muddy down there.
Actually, we can get one on one side, one on the other, because they're similar pictures. So let, let one go one way, one go the other. It's only off by maybe a quarter of a car.
I have no questions.
You want to see the pictures, sir?
I did, I did.
Yes, is there, uh?
What was he talking about?
Any, well, do you have a question of him, sir? I'm just asking. No, okay. Does anybody have a question of the witness? Is there any other witnesses that wish to give testimony? I believe you wanted to say something before, but I couldn't let you draw. Now, Mr. Rollon.
No, I'm satisfied with them eliminating the addition.
Huh? So is there any other member of the public wishing to give testimony? None? All right, then, do you wish to sum up, sir?
Um, I think, I don't want to repeat everything that we've already heard this evening, um, we, we, you know what the application, uh, is, uh, we're looking for the requested variance relief with the conditions that we've, uh, we've offered off to the board, uh, meaning that we will not include the addition over the rear of the property, which will eliminate three of the two-bedroom units, uh, and with regard to, uh.
And the other units would stay as, I believe, what is it, four-one-bedroom and eight-two-bedroom? No, wait, that's not right. What do we have? Uh, I'm sorry, eight-two-bedroom and two-one-bedroom?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And all, all the rest of the testimony that's been presented and discussed will remain the same, even though we're moving the, the, the two units, the same amount of parking will be provided, and, and so forth. Uh, so we just, uh, we believe we met the standards for the variance that's being requested, and we respectfully request the board's grant of approval for our application. Thank you.
Gentlemen, your pleasure. We're now open for discussion.
I like the fact that they just eliminated construction.
I like that, too.
Yeah.
That's three two-bedrooms. But I leave it up to the board, whatever, their pleasure. One way or the other, but we have a discussion to make.
Does he have to submit?
No, because he's just eliminating what he was adding.
In the event, in the event the board approves the application, they will have to submit the laws plans. Yeah.
Yeah, but, but not, the additions eliminate.
Not for us.
Right.
That's right.
Wait, can I, can I say something, or is it?
No, it's not, we're, we're.
No?
No.
Okay. Maintenance, the property maintenance.
Everybody else will remain the same, the thumbs are the same side, everybody?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen.
In the event?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, just, just to focus this, because we were here a while back. I had from the August meeting, again, in the event, the board votes favorably, there would be warnings on the front facade, that was still, on the Washington Avenue facade, that would still remain planters on the front facade to give it some color. The stone, the municipal building stone will be restored. You will comply with the consultant's reports, I believe Mr. Los Pramas said that, there, the applicant will sign parking spaces, issue permits, whatever you want to do with regard to that, so there's an allocation of parking. And we, and our other normal conditions.
Uh, I was, Mr. Chairman, I think we've dropped the main one, was that we're eliminating the.
Elimination of, of the three, yes.
And, and, well, three two-bedrooms.
Yes.
Now, I want to ask our engineer one question, I believe it's the engineer. Hold on, Mr. Mr. Di Lorenzo's here also. My question is, what is now the density, now that we're down to ten? We were at forty-nine point seven? Thirteen? And I know there's, there's no, there's no, uh, there's no residential allowed in this zone, but in the, in the, in the next zone?
BG zone.
Yeah, what is, what is allowed?
Depending with.
Thirty-eight to eight.
Thirty-eight to an acre?
Thirty-eight.
And what would this be now, with down to ten, you know?
Thirty-eight to eight.
Thirty-eight.
It was forty, it was almost fifty.
Forty-nine plus.
It's forty-nine change.
And now it's thirty-eight and change.
In the BG zone, the zone next to it, I believe you get, uh, you get a lot more than that.
Yeah, it's big.
Right. No, no, not bigger, uh, even on a smaller lot.
Oh, that's small, okay.
I'm excused.
Yes, I just asked that one question.
Like to make it fifty units with the conditions listed out.
Motion made by Mr. Smith to approve, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Montalbano, with the conditions listed, you want to list the conditions?
We just, we just went over.
You just went over everything, right?
Do it again?
No, not for me.
Okay, all right, just ask.
Maybe Jamie's.
So anybody knows what their vote is?
Uh, five, five affirmative votes will, will be required to go back to this review process.
Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Caruso?
Yeah.
Gignan?
No.
Montalbano?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mafucci?
No.
Palano?
No.
Del Gershia?
No. No, I deny. Thank you for the more time. You're welcome.
Shall we make the vote count? Mr. Gasil, you're up.
Proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Councilors, members of Robert Cassillon, the firm's Cassillon, Mako, 524 Union Avenue in Belville. I represent the applicant in this matter, Armando Rojas, owner of 274, 276, Belville Avenue. He seeking certifications pursuant to New Jersey statutes annotated 4055B dash sixty-eight and Belville ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen point one, to continue to use the subject property as two-family and one commercial unit. Property was purchased by the applicant in July of two thousand and six, with two residential units and a vacant commercial space on the street front. It was varied between two and three residential units historically. Belville tax records indicate the property is assessed as a three-family with a store since nineteen hundred and forty-five. The letter from Mr. Di Lorenzo reflects that information. Price and lead records indicate that the property was used as a two-family with one commercial use from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen seventy-two. The witness you'll hear from is Mr. Rojas, the owner of the property. I'm in of the opinion that the application provides sufficient proof to allow the board to decide that it should be two residential units and one commercial unit. I'd like to call. I'd like to form Mr. Rojas as my witness.
With regard to the notice publication, I have reviewed it, marked A one, it was adequate, and we're able to proceed. Mr. Rojas, why don't you come on up? You can raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth? Could you state your name and say your last name?
Armando Rojas, R-O-J-A-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Rojas, what is your home address?
Thirty-five Row Street, Bellevue, New Jersey.
And are you the owner of two seventy-four, two seventy-six Bellevue Avenue?
Yes, I am.
And for how long have you owned that property?
It was June two thousand and six.
And what was the property? How was it comprised at the time of the...
It was vacant.
But the usage, how was the usage?
It was the usage was a three-family with a commercial.
And at the present time, you have two residential tenants in there, right? And did you do a little work to convert from three residential to two residential?
Yes, I did.
And you have the certificate of occupancy from Mr. Di Lorenzo with regard to that?
Yes, I did.
And did you at one time rent the commercial section?
Yes, I did.
And did that tenant, did there come a time when that tenant left?
Yes.
And then you rented to another tenant?
Yes, I did.
And did that tenant oversee Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Yes, he did.
And as a result of that, did you then determine or become aware that you didn't have the legal right to use that space for a tenant?
That's correct.
And did you tell the board what it is that you're seeking approval to do today with regard to that certification?
Well, my understanding is the commercial side of it is, doesn't have a CO. That's what I was told, and I just want to make this to board. And I'm seeking for a certificate of occupancy for the commercial.
And have you reviewed the tax records that have been submitted to the board?
Yes, I have.
And do those tax records reflect since nineteen hundred and forty-five that your property is being taxed as a three-family plus one commercial?
Yes, it is.
And does the price and Lee reflect from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen seventy-two, again, documentation submitted to the board, that it's a two-family plus one commercial unit?
Yes.
And does the letter of Mr. Di Lorenzo denying your ability to use this for two plus commercial reflect that it was always taxed since nineteen hundred and forty-five as three families plus one commercial unit?
Yes, yes, yes.
I have no further questions.
My question is, is upon the testimony. You said you converted from three-family to two, where, where did the conversion take place?
I didn't understand the question.
Well, in other words, I'm not trying to confuse you, I saw a picture. Like, were there three apartments upstairs, you made them two bigger ones?
Yeah, no, it's just storage space now, the third floor. So it's, yeah, the second floor uses, yeah, for space to put their stuff away.
That's it?
That's it.
But there used to be a tenant on the third floor?
There was never a tenant, it was always a...
There never a tenant when he had...
Was there a kitchen there? Excuse me, was there a kitchen there or a bathroom up there?
It was, I, I think it was, it was, it was demo, there was like a small apartment there, a small, I'm gonna say studio apartment there.
Prior to that, I'm sorry, prior to that, he owned it, it was disbanded.
It was disbanded, okay. So you're only seeking the two upstairs stories, right? Because nobody on the first floor, it's a little...
No, no.
Okay, and the commercial, you're not looking to convert, you want to keep it commercial?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Anybody else have a question?
The two units are legal, it's just the store, that's a question.
Yes, but he's not looking to convert the store into a third family.
No, no, no.
Okay. Anybody else has questions of the applicant? Any members of the public have a question of the applicant? Do you wish to sum up, Mr. Gassillon?
I agree with you.
I hope so.
Property was constructed prior to nineteen thirty-seven. And at that time, a commercial use was permitted. The commercial use was prohibited after nineteen seventy-seven. The tax records clearly reflect that since nineteen forty-five, it's always had the commercial use there. The price and Lee reflects nineteen fifty-two, nineteen seventy-four, the commercial use plus two residential units. Obviously, at one time, there were three residential units, and that's the way it's been taxed. He's been paying taxes since two thousand and six. It looks like the three residential units plus a commercial use. He's only used it for two residential units. So you got the tax records, the construction official's letter reflecting the tax record information to Price and Lee, and I think all of us have lived in the town long enough to know that that is an old building, been there for a very long time. Clearly reflects that the commercial use was on the first floor. I have nothing for, I thank you for your time and attention.
Question on the board? Would you like to make a motion to approve? Motion made to approve by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Gi, no, Mr. Caruso. Clerk, call the roll.
Caruso.
Yes.
Gudana.
Yes.
Montalbano.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Delgertia.
Yes. A rule done by my...
Again, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, members, thank you.
Oh, I want to...
Wait, before you go any further, Mr. Chairman, the director gave me this review of the double fire department, just...
Oh, that's all about Brighton.
Reunite the record.
I requested it, yes.
So you can put it on file.
Alright, so we can put it on the record. This Gerald Delgertia, that's not me. There, Mr., no, he didn't put it in the...
Has that to do with it?
Okay.
This has, this has to do, so you know this quick, this has to do with Brighton Avenue. There, Mr. Delgertia. He'll get my name right soon, I'll...
Sure.
We visited the side of the parking lot at one thirty-eight Brighton Avenue. The increase of sixteen spaces...
Hold up.
Let me know when you're ready. Okay. Back to them. We visited the side of the parking lot at one thirty-eight Brighton Avenue. The increase of sixteen spaces will not change any access that we already have. We cannot drive around the building that is now. There already is parking against the rear of the building, and the fire escape is clear of any spaces below. And this is signed by William Hands, fire official for the Bellevue Fire Department.
That should be circulated to the applicant and the board.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Gassillon?
Mr. Gassillon, you have something for your... Yeah, but I think we have to make a copy for the record.
I'm putting this on, Mr. Di Lorenzo showed you back the copy of this to you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Secretary? Or, no. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Smith. All favor? Alright, that's it.